Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome here, everyone. And at this time, I would like to give the opening to Counsel J. Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having taken a step to the political environment in the U.S. this past month are the devastating California fires. The deadly fires, two of the most destructive on record in California, started January 7th on a day of extremely high fire danger conditions due to the Santa Ana Windstorm. More than 27 deaths have been reported in the fire, and 31 people are still missing. The wildfires have forced over 200,000 people to evacuate, and it destroyed or damaged more than 1,500 structures. Most of the damage and carnage resulted from the two largest fires, the Palisades Fire in the Pacific Palisades and the Eaton Fire in Aladina. Total number of fires started up in this area to date have been over 220. Here are some of the statistics of the four larger fires. The Palisades Fire covered 23,000 acres and a 63% containment. The Eaton Fire was 14,000 acres and 87% containment. The Hearst Fire is 800 acres with 100% containment, and then the Kenneth Fire, over 1,000 acres with 35% containment. What are the, what were the conditions that contribute to the fire starting and then going out of control? Reports indicated that some of the fires were started by arsonists, some by lightning, some were the embers being blown across and assisted by strong winds, causing the fires to jump several miles and starting new ones. Conditions in the area were ripe for wildfires. It appears that the proactive fire suppression plans and the preparedness had not been addressed or adhered to, including the massive dry underbrush that had not been destroyed. And the reports are that the underbrush was volatile as petroleum. Winds in the area reached speeds of over 100 miles an hour, spread the fire, embers, et cetera. The strong winds handcuffed the fire suppression crews as drones, helicopters, and water bombers were unable to respond much of the time due to the high winds. The firefighters included more than 4,700 personnel, largely limited firemen on foot, firemen with fire trucks, and other equipment. Many firefighter personnel from Canada volunteered to travel to California and assist personnel who were suffering severe fatigue. Hampering the efforts of the firefighters' efforts were things like fire hydrants and water pressure, and of course, large Pacific Palisades reservoir that was under repair and offline for the year. The reservoir was empty. Some blame is attached to the lack of competent leadership and the lack of preparedness. In the past year, reports indicate that 30% of the fire department budget was cut. On January 1st and to the 3rd, there were numerous warnings, issues of possible high winds, and the threat of wildfires that were not taken seriously. Of course, we have a number of people blaming global warming. Along with the many deaths, we learned that more than, more than 30,000 people and houses were not insured due to the insurance company's canceling policies or not renewing former policies. Shortly, it will be time to take stock of all the damage, clean up the area, attempt to plan for restoration, and then implementing such plans, remembering to adhere to bylaws, legislation, policy, licensing, permits, and other red tape. One of the fire personnel fighting the fires is a lady from Steinbach area who now resides in California. Brenda is the captain flying one of the airplanes, the daughter of Bob and Linda Brandt. She flies an OV-10 Bronco aircraft, the same as those used in Desert Storm and in Vietnam. She is tasked to fly into the fire, followed by a water bomber. She then strategically determines where the best place is to drop the water or the fire retardant. My hat goes off to this courageous individual. On November 7th this past year, members of this council, along with members of the fire department paramedics, attended an emergency management planning meeting at our fire hall. The objectives of the exercise were to educate council in case of mass disaster as it pertains to legislation and the levels of responsibility, especially for council, who ultimately all are authorized and have a say in everything that happens during a disaster, including all costs incurred. This council is legislated, this council here, is legislated and must declare a state of emergency if required. There are 156 pages of legislation that municipalities must comply with as it relates to emergencies. Legislation mandates that all municipalities have an emergency exercise every year and a large emergency exercise every four years. Although we may not have a California fire, we could have a large grass fire endangering our residences, or we could have strong winds, tornadoes, or deadly chemical spill. Steinbach will be having a large emergency exercise this spring, and all members of council are encouraged to participate. A unified command center will be set up at the fire hall, and this council will be expected to operate out of this council chamber. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Hebert. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us. Before we adopt agenda, I would just like to ask you to remove 9H and 9I. This will not be needed at this time. So we'll just stroke them out, and then looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Siemens. Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Counsel, we have the minutes of January 7, 2025. The regular council meeting, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Siemens. Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Counsel, is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none. It is just a little after 7:35, so we'll move directly into the public hearing. At this time, I'll close the council meeting, open the, open the public hearing. This is referring to subdivision 4451-2024-9041. This is referring to August Cove. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, this application for subdivision, as you mentioned, the file number, Mr. Mayor, does apply to the creation of August Cove, which is to be located directly south of Acres Drive in the Steinbach Industrial Park. The application for subdivision seeks council approval for the creation of 11 new lots to create additional lots for development for industrial purposes. The owner of the properties is Steinbach Community Development Corporation, with the applicant for the subdivision being the city of Steinbach. There is no written correspondence on file other than for the letter from community planning, which indicates that generally it has no concerns with the application. This public hearing is strictly for purposes of the opening of the public, public road that forms part of the subdivision. Recommendation from administration is that council approve this application for subdivision.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Workteen. Since we are the applicant, I will ask if there's anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file. I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Swagstra. Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You drive through our industrial park, and it is easy to see that there is a hub of activity going on these days, and lots are rapidly being sold, and there's increasing demand for more lots. So this particular plan that we have here actually has smaller lots, so that makes it more affordable for maybe businesses that are just starting out or just, yeah, wanting to have a smaller space. I think that's important. There's a lot of large lots that have been sold and are being used, but this actually gives an opportunity for smaller businesses as well to get started. So I think this is a good use of that land, and I look forward to, you know, that industrial park continuing to grow and thrive.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city, of course, we're always looking for opportunities to expand the industrial park, and so whenever we can have a new industry, new businesses, that is a good thing. In this case here, this subdivides 12 lots, 11 of which are new, and creates the new public road, which is what this public hearing is about. The road's name is August Cove. And so I think it makes sense for us to approve this. Anytime there is more opportunities for businesses to start up and have a new location, I think that is positive, and we want to see our industrial park continue to grow and expand.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
Nothing further.
Okay. Well, counsel, I'm really excited to see this project go forward, this subdivision. I think in 2022, we built Acres Drive, ran that all the way through Keating, created seven lots. They were sold basically as soon as they came on, on the market. Now, this is, is our answer to create more lots, and I do really like how these lots are different sizes. There's everything, there are smaller lots, as Counsel Penner said, .68 acres, all the way to 2 and 1/2 acres. And then the 12th lot will still be a nice big piece in case a large company would need. That will be almost eight acres. So I think this is, this is covering a really, a wide spectrum of businesses that could, that could come here, and I think this is, is great for our city to be proactive, to create spaces and create an environment where businesses want to be and grow and thrive and build. Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. We will go down to 9A. This is the administration. 9A is accounts payable. In the back of the book, we've all had a chance to review. Looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Penner.
City paying their bills. Thank you.
Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. We have 9B. This is bylaw 2260. This is referring to 79 and 83 first read. This is first reading. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application for rezoning under bylaw 2260 is being applied for by vote building construction, with the owner of the properties being JDL Holdings, LTD. Purpose of rezoning bylaw 2260 is to rezone the subject properties from RLD residential low density to RMD residential medium density for purposes of a proposed multifamily development. By giving this bylaw first reading, that would permit the file to be scheduled for a public hearing. Recommendation from administration is that council does proceed to give first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Swagstra. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First Street is a place, is an area of the city that has absolutely gone through a bit of a transformation in the last, last few years, as noted by administration. Since 2018, 122 new residential units have been created, just in that neighborhood alone. So again, with administration not having any issues with proceeding to second reading, I think it's appropriate to do that so that the public can weigh in on this file.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this would be a significant change. There's been a lot of development along Main, along First Street in regards to multifamily. This would propose to designate this property to residential medium density, and there would be 17 residential units. And so the purpose of moving ahead with first reading is to ensure that we can have the public hearing. We will hear from the applicant and see the plans, and then also the neighborhood will have a chance to comment and ask questions.
Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
Nothing further.
Counsel, I think this is, it's always good to hear from the public, and this is the way we can. By having first reading, we will have a public hearing, and, and then we can, we can make our decision from there. Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. We've got 9C, bylaw 2254. This is referring to our traffic bylaw. We'll be doing second and third reading today. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to defer to the city's corporate services manager, Mr. Adam Thiessen, for items C, D, and E.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Traffic bylaw 2254 was given first reading back on November 6th. We have a full summary of rationale on page 53 of the package, as well as a copy of the draft bylaw on page 55 with changes highlighted. I won't go as in-depth as I did last time, but to summarize, the purpose of this bylaw update is to create the reduced speed school zone for new elementary school that is scheduled for completion in summer 2025 in the Park Hill neighborhood, to simplify the city bylaw structure by combining the previous speed limits bylaw, reduced speed school zones bylaw, and traffic bylaw, to clarify that city engineering staff determine road classifications based on construction methods used to set road weight restrictions, to allow the city public works manager to determine spring road weight restrictions based on local observable conditions, rather than providing, following the provincial time period for PTHs, to clarify prohibited obstruction contraventions, to increase the fine amount for parking heavy vehicles, not actively loading or unloading on a job site in recognition of the associated costs of repairing public roads, to update the fine amounts for parking tickets so that they better cover the costs associated with providing parking enforcement. And finally, recommendation from city administration is to approve second and third reading of bylaw 2254, the Steinbach traffic bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Thiessen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Siemens.
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Hebert. Go ahead, Counsel Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's, this is a change when we take a look at our bylaws, and in, in this case, we have three different bylaws. As noticed, as indicated, that we have our, our speed limits bylaw, our, and reduce speed loans. We also have our, our traffic bylaw, and it combines, builds a new bylaw that encompasses all of them, and it also helps clarify it. When we bring up bylaws and we review, we also put them into more of a proper English, I think, so it's more readable, more understandable, so, so that helps the people that are reading it to understand. And it also gives staff, in this case, city engineering staff, they determine the road classifications for construction methods, and, and they also set the road restrictions. And through the public works manager, you can, all the spring road weight restrictions that go on each spring, they can take care of that. So we also update our fine amounts, and as per, for everything associated with the public parking and, and the different fines for various things, so. But all of this was initiated, this whole review was initiated by the new school in the Park Hill neighborhood. That'll be opening in 2025. So I think it's, it's good that we review it. It's good that we come up with a process, and there's a lot of good clarity in this. And I think it reduced the amount of verbiage, too, the amount of pages that, to read as part of all of it, and it puts them all in one form. So I think this is a good move, and we should approve second reading.
Anything further, Counsel Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Siemens has basically covered everything. One of the key things is safety for kids for the new school. And secondly, we have to have regulations for weight and so on in order for these streets to actually last, and they're made for general traffic, not heavy-duty traffic. So enforcement of bylaws is good. So I'll approve it.
Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
No, sir.
Counsel, I'm, I'm okay with all the comments that have been said, so. As for the question, call, call for the question for second reading. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We'll go directly into third reading. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Penner. Any comments?
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay. Call for the question. All's in favor of third reading? Opposed, that is carried. We've got the bylaw, we've got 9D next, the bylaw 2258. This is the animal control bylaw. We'll be doing again second and third reading. Counsel, as Mr. Workteen had stated last time, I'll go directly to Mr. Thiessen. Can you please introduce this file?
Certainly. Yes, counsel gave first reading to this bylaw draft back on December 3rd. We've got a summary of changes and rationale report beginning on page 80 of the package, as well as a copy of the draft bylaw with changes highlighted on page 83 and the old bylaws following. To summarize, the purpose of this update is to improve the ability of animal control officers to enforce the bylaw with new provisions that allow them to seize animals when they're repeatedly found to be in contravention of provisions of the bylaw, to simplify the city bylaw structure by combining the old pit bull bylaw with the animal control bylaw, to clarify that removal of wildlife from private property is a sole responsibility of the property owner, to improve administration of fees for dog licenses by moving into the city fee schedule, to reduce nuisance issues that arise from unattended dogs that are left outdoors, to improve enforcement of dog park rules by adding those rules to the, to the bylaw, and by requiring owners of suspected pit bulls to obtain a veterinarian's opinion as to the breed rather than relying on schedules and information in the bylaw. Recommendation from city administration is to approve second and third reading of bylaw 2258, and in addition, that council would approve the increase of the dog license fee from the current $10 for altered dogs and $25 for unaltered, to be increased to $25 for altered dogs and $60 for unaltered dogs.
Thank you, Mr. Thiessen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swagstra?
Make the motion for a second reading.
Second by Counsel Siemens. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another bylaw that we are looking to bring up to date, and we've already gone over first reading. So just briefly, the bylaw is necessitated partly by the fact that we have rules in the dog park that we want to, that we want to be enforced, and by putting it in the animal control bylaw, it makes it possible for us to more easily enforce those rules. It gives animal control officers more powers to enforce the bylaw in regards to seizing animals that are repeatedly in contravention of the provisions in the bylaw. It also simplifies things by incorporating the pit bull bylaw in this. So because we have the ban on pit bulls, this is just simply incorporated in the animal control bylaw itself. And so really, this is about streamlining, making things more efficient, updating some of the, the fines, and giving some more powers to animal control officers. So it continued, it made, it made sense on first reading. I think it makes sense on second and the upcoming third reading as well.
Anything further, Counsel Siemens?
No, sir.
Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Counsel will go directly into third reading. Looking for a motion. Counsel Siemens, second by Counsel Hebert. Any comment?
Nothing further.
Nothing further.
Well, call for the question. All's in favor of third reading. Opposed, that is carried. We are now looking at bylaw 2259. This is the administrative penalty bylaw. We'll be doing second and third reading as well. And Mr. Thiessen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, for sure. Yeah, this, this update is really a result of the previous two bylaws the council just passed. What we're doing with this bylaw is we're updating Schedule A of the administrative penalty bylaw, number 2076, so that fines are legally enforceable under the provincial municipal bylaw enforcement act. So the fines that were in those, the animal control bylaw and the traffic bylaw also have to be in this one to be enforceable. Recommendation from city administration is to approve second and third reading of bylaw 2259 to amend Schedule A of the administrative penalty bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Thiessen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swagstra?
Make the motion for a second reading.
Second by Counsel Penner. Go ahead, Counsel Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad I have a seconder.
It was close.
Well, it was close. I mean, it's, because I wouldn't be able to make the case otherwise. So I think it's important we pass bylaw 2259, because essentially what this does is it makes it possible for us to enforce the penalties that are in the two previous bylaws that we've just given second and third reading to. And so this incorporates it, those penalties into our administrative penalty bylaw, and that gives the bylaw enforcement employees the ability to issue these penalty fees. So if we don't make this amendment here, it becomes very hard to actually enforce the bylaws that we just approved. So I really hope that we give the second reading, and then also third reading as well, because that's the only way that any of this makes any sense.
Anything further, Counsel Penner?
Nothing, nothing much to add, other than hopefully the administrative penalty bylaw will give the traffic bylaw, make our citizens pump the brakes a little bit on that and give the animal control bylaw some teeth, so.
Anything further of counsel? You guys, all these puns. Okay. We're just gonna go. Call for the question. All's in favor of second reading. Opposed, that is carried. We'll go directly into third reading. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Penner.
Motion to approve. No comment.
No comments? Well, we'll call for the question. All's in favor of third reading. Opposed, that is carried. Okay. Counsel, 9F, finally, not a bylaw. This is excavator license. This is on page 128. Looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Siemens. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my favorite. Excavators are needed in order to build new buildings, so let's give them license.
You're here.
Anything further?
Let him dig.
Anything further of counsel? Nothing in closing? Well, we're gonna vote on Bill's favorite, or Counsel Hebert's favorite. Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. 9G, building permits for December 2024. It's on page 129. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Looking for, Counsel Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Penner. Any comments?
It was an incredible year. I'm not looking forward to seeing Januaries, because we'll be starting all over again. But 2024 has certainly got to be one of the best on record, if not the best on record. Of note is the number of dwelling units added this year, which is 344, which is significant. So that is really encouraging. But again, you know, I was driving through the industrial park, I think it was yesterday, and you just, it was by Millbrook Market, and then through, you know, Acres and Industrial, and things are moving in Steinbach, and I think that's really encouraging for our community. So I think 20, again, 2024 is gonna go down in the books for us, and I'm just really pleased to be moving this.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this wraps up, wraps up the year for 2024 for a total of just shy of $105 million in building permits, which is incredible to think about in a community of our size that, that shows the speed that Steinbach is continuing to grow. You know, in 2023, we were talking about how commercial was well ahead of residential and how you often see, see the ebbs and flows of residential versus commercial. And you see this year, we had 77 million in residential and 27, almost 28 in commercial. And, and it shows that the ebbs and flows aren't exactly, the development of the city isn't really a cart and a horse. It's, you know, two, two, working in tandem. They don't always work at the same time, but you have the ebbs and flows where residential go high and then commercial go high, and then it just continues on a cycle like that. And it's good to see that that cycle's continuing.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
Nothing further.
You know, counsel, I would, I would just like to echo some of those comments. You're, we, we did, we, we finished on a real high. Of course, we're starting all over again. I, I see no reason why 2025 can't be a great year as well. There's so much going on, as, as to what Counsel Penner said. When you go, when you drive through our community, especially our industrial park, it's just, everything's popping up. There's just so much going on. And even though we had a record number of housing starts, 330, or 344, we still had almost 120,000 square feet of commercial that was built also. That's significant, too. Like, at any given time, 27, almost 28 million dollars would have been a good year commercially for, for any community of our size. Now, when you add the residential, as, as Counsel Damian Penner said, that, that just translates to a fantastic year. On the heels of 2023, that was mentioned as well, where we were over 200 million, and primarily that was commercial. You know what? Development is alive and well in our community. Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, counsel, are there any questions of counsel? Seeing none, we'll move on to 11 correspondence and petitions. So we've got 11A. The, the multi-material stewardship Manitoba. This is the 2025 municipal recycling funding payments. Counsel, would you like to proceed? Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Take his information at this time? Okay? And we've got 11B. This is a letter we see, received from a couple in our community, Bill and Karen Elias. They live on Harmony Lane, and they have a stop sign request. Now, the letters in here, council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
I would request that we do a review of that street in terms of the traffic, and if there's a stop sign specifically needed at Harmony Lane and Cutlass Drive, and just maybe as a little bit of backstory, this is a very devastating experience they had when they were walking their two dogs, and a speeding car hit their dogs and killed both their dogs. And that is really, really tragic for them, and as I mentioned, there's lots of children in the neighborhood, too. So this is something I think we need to proactively, well, I don't even know if it's proactively at this point, but we need to take a look at this and address if there needs to be a stop sign in that area.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
I would agree that we ask administration for a review of the stop sign. I think also, there are other traffic calming devices that the city could put in place, and potentially, they could be part of a recommendation as well, but certainly, we need a stop sign review, as per the email request.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, we've had, we've had two counselors that have suggested that we have our staff do a report, audit this section of road. Would you, would you be open to, do we have consensus to do this, and actually look at other traffic calming devices as well, as Counselor Siemens had stated? And also, I have one request, and this is, I'm gonna be asking Deputy Mayor Counselor Swakstra, is this something, because of the significance of this letter, would, can I ask you to bring this to, as the chair of the RCP advisory board, to bring this to the next RCP meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we can certainly do that, because part of the issue that they're raising is one of enforcement, and clearly, there does need, you know, we need enforcement of the speed limit here, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and as to comments from Counselor Penner, this happened on December 19th. They just recently contacted me and asked, and I told, asked them to write a letter to us. The reason they didn't come right away is they were actually, this is a big blow for their family. They were mourning, and this is significant, and their concern is that this does not happen to children. So, thank you, Counselor Swakstra. Thank you, council, for putting this on to administration, so that we can look at this. And Mr. Workthing, are you okay with bringing this to your staff and having a little review done on this, this section of road, and come back with recommendations?
Well, as I understand, the consensus from council is firstly, to do a traffic count review at the three-way intersection to determine if stop signs, three-way stop is warranted. Secondly, my understanding was council was interested in investigating other traffic calming measures.
Yes.
If that is council's direction, while the city of Steinbach has expertise to do the traditional traffic counts to evaluate the three-way stop request, traditionally, the city would seek the services of an outside consultant to evaluate other measures. That would come with a cost. At this point, there is no budget funding approved for that type of initiative.
Okay, just one second. Counselor Penner has a question?
I just want to clarify through you, I'm not sure that the issue here is the volume of traffic for the stop sign. I think the issue here is speed. So I suspect if there's an actual count, I'm not sure if that would warrant the stop sign. I don't actually think that's the issue in this case and for that street. So I'm just wondering, does that change your comments, or what your, I guess, response to that would be?
I am not an engineer by training, however, my understanding is that a traditional process for the evaluation of traffic flows is stop signs are not intended to be speed control devices, and they're not intended to be. So if the concern is the speed of traffic, then a stop sign review at the three-way, like a three-way stop, would likely not deliver the results that may be expected. If it's, if it's an evaluation of excessive speed, that could require a different type of analysis that the city isn't best able to handle. That's where the outside consultant would be recommended.
I guess, surely, a stop sign does slow speed, though. If you have to stop, you have to slow down. So I know maybe that's not what it intended, but maybe that's a side benefit.
Well, in the immediate area of the stop sign, yes, but traffic, if they're speeding and they're exceeding the speed limit, there is also the chance that they would disobey a traffic control device such as a stop sign.
Well, then we need consensus where to go. Are we?
I suggest that we start with a traffic, with a stop sign review, as requested here, and then we can make decisions after that, after we get those. That gives city staff time to do that homework, or that review, and I agree that it's not necessarily a traffic count issue, but if we start with that, that's a starting point. We are reacting to it and doing something, and then we can have a further discussion on traffic calming devices.
Okay. Then consensus from council to start with a stop sign review?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Workthing, then I think, then going forward, there's clarification that we will do, we will start here. There might be more to come, but at this point, we'll start at this, at a stop line, at a stop sign review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, I can ask my staff to look after, and I will report back to council in a reasonable time period. I'm not sure when that would be, but it should be able to be completed within the next two months.
Okay, thank you very much. There's no other business? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Siemens, second by Counselor Hebert. Call for the question. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Next council meeting is Tuesday, February 4th, at 7:30 PM. Yeah. Dogs.